Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, your first item is to conduct a first citizen's participation period.
Very good. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items that are on today's agenda. And as a reminder, public comment is not an opportunity to engage in dialogue with the board, and the board is prohibited from engaging in dialogue with you during this time. Those wishing to speak on posted agenda items, now is your opportunity. Please step forward to the microphone, state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning again. My name is Eric Melchizedek Christ Nimrod, N-I-M-R-O-D. And you can find Melchizedek at Psalms 110, verse 4. Good morning, Justin Jones, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about agenda number nine, the approval to increase the amount to 165,000 using 55,000 more of my sweet money for off-street shared use path maintenance. Now, I understand that that's for street sweeping and graffiti cleaning, which is needed. It says the goal is to enhance public awareness and support for regional transportation system. I think that's the catch-all phrase there. But I'm asking, is the public awareness, does that term include we, the people of Las Vegas who ride the bus? Because the busses are really not that, if you want support, if you want the public to support the busses, the interior should be more aesthetic, so to speak. Now, there's an everyday safer advertising campaign that was proposed on November the 9th at the November the 9th Board meeting. I saw a sign saying, "Everyday Safer." That's, it's nice, but it's not aesthetically pleasing. It doesn't really get to mind. Once you see it, you read it, you forget it. You see, I propose a much more motivational, inspirational-type signage that will lessen the violence on the bus, which I came in contact with today. Thought we'd have to have an Ali Frazier thing going for a second there, which was very interesting. But to stop that type of mentality from flourishing, I think the signage needs to be better. The insides need to be more aesthetic. Now, I proposed on that November 9th video comment section, I proposed a better alternative, or I'll say a complimentary alternative. I don't know if you've read it, but I'll present it to somebody somewhere when I find out how to do it. MJ. My time is up?
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod.
Okay. MJ, how you doing today?
Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on an item on today's posted agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period and turn back over to Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is to approve the agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All right. There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Mayor Hardy?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Chairman, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is to receive the CEO report. And today, we are excited that we are going to recognize a driver, a paratransit driver for MV Transportation, Randy Drummond. This month, we would like to honor her. She's been with, she's been a paratransit driver for many years. And Antoinette Braddock, who is the Director of Paratransit and Specialized Services, will present.
Thank you, MJ. As we kick off the new year, we have the pleasure of celebrating RTC Paratransit's 30th year anniversary. And today, we want to celebrate a remarkable paratransit operator who's been driving for almost as long as paratransit has existed. Join us in honoring Randy Drummond. Randy has been an operator for an incredible 27 years. Throughout her decade-long career as a paratransit operator, Randy has displayed unmatched professionalism. She has never received a single customer complaint. Randy truly loves her job and finds joy in connecting with our paratransit customers. I invite you to join us as we surprise Randy and express our heartfelt thanks for her exceptional service. Let's go.
Hi, Randy. My name is Antoinette Braddock. I am the Director of RTC Paratransit, and I have the pleasure of presenting to you the RTC Crystal Bus Award on behalf of the RTC Board and our CEO, MJ Maynard. And we just want to recognize your 27 years as a paratransit operator, your exemplary service for our paratransit customers, and we just want to thank you and congratulate you. So.
Okay, I want to say thank you to MV Transit, RTC, the Board of Commissions.
Stand up, Randy.
Randy is amazing. Okay. Randy, thanks for all that you do. Next, we would like to recognize and thank Computer Data Services, otherwise known as CDS. And again, Antoinette Braddock will present.
Thank you, MJ. Today, as we continue to celebrate Paratransit's 30th anniversary, it's an honor to acknowledge Computer Data Services, also known as CDS. CDS is more than just a call center. Their dedicated employees consistently go above and beyond providing exceptional service to our community, and the great length that they've gone to during the past few years is worth the recognition. First, during the challenging times of COVID-19, CDS used funds from the CARES Act in a truly remarkable way. They ensured their employee levels remained stable and offered equipment and services to a reduced cost to the RTC. Second, recognizing the importance of timeliness, and CDS call center operators strive every single day to be just under 28 seconds. Their commitment is above and beyond. Lastly, when Las Vegas hosted its first Formula One race, CDS went the extra mile, and they made sure their staff was first in all of the intricacies of the RTC app and all of our technology. We have a special surprise for CDS. Let's tune in as we witness the special moment.
Terry, you and I have seen each other as it is, once or twice before. But I'm Antoinette Braddock. I am the Director of Paratransit. And in all truth, I am talking on this call today because, on behalf of the RTC Board of Directors and our CEO, MJ Maynard, I am actually really excited to virtually present CDS with our RTC Crystal Bus Award. And this award is in recognition of all of the exemplary work and services that CDS has provided, not just to RTC, but more specifically to our customers. We congratulate you, and we thank you and your dedicated team for all the work that you do on RTC's behalf.
Well, thank you. I didn't know I was receiving anything today. Thank you. Again, thank you for recognizing our performance and what we contribute to the partnership with RTC and CDS.
They're a great, great partner.
Congratulations to CDS. Let's applaud them.
And for our next agenda, Deputy CEO David Swallow will provide you with an update on the progress of our roadway funding, including fuel tax and sales tax. Dave?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is our second quarterly update for fiscal year 2024. And I'm happy to report that to date, since fuel revenue indexing was enacted at the beginning of 2014, we've had 674 total projects come under contract, of which 439 have been completed to date. We still have another 108 in construction and 127 more that are in design, preparing for construction. If you look at the total dollars under contract, we have about $2.6 billion to date, again, since 2014, when this was enacted, of which $2.3 billion is coming from fuel taxes and over $300 million from sales tax that go to these roadway projects. When, also looking at how we're doing on getting the work done, again, we've had, up to date, about $2.4 billion in revenue that we've leveraged into about $2.6 billion in contracts, of which we've paid over $1.8 billion in invoices. So the hats off to you and your respective jurisdictions for being great partners and getting those projects out and underway. More importantly, you look at the jobs. This, of course, is just an estimate, but cumulatively, we've seen over 17,000 jobs, either direct and direct, or otherwise supportive of the fuel roadway projects. Now, just for the quarter, I'd like to highlight some key projects that were done, but also to talk through a number of other ones that are underway. If the first one, City of Las Vegas, we have the, actually, let me, sorry, step back to Clark County's. Clark County, we have the roadway rehabilitation program, which included removal and subsequent reconstruction of pavement in the Rainbow Canyon subdivision of Mount Charleston. As you know, this is critically important, especially with the impacts of weather events last year. The project wrapped up in November of 2023 at a cost of approximately $950,000. Going on to the next project, City of Las Vegas, this is along Harris Avenue from Brew Street to Wardell Street. These upgrades have enhanced the safety for all road users to and from Robert Lunt, Arturo Camberro, and Hewittson Elementary Schools, and include repaving and striping, new traffic control and signage, intelligent transportation system improvements, bike lanes, as well as sidewalks, and ADA accessible curb ramps. And also a shared use path with trail lighting. So the project wrapped up in November at a cost of $5.7 million. Next, in the City of Henderson, we look at Sandy Ridge Avenue between Camberro and Rocky Ridge Drive. The project included application of roadway sealant to help preserve the pavement, new pavement markings, as well as signage. Project wrapped up in September of 2023 at a cost of approximately $135,000. Moving over to Mesquite, this was on Mesquite Heights Road from Canyon Crest Boulevard to the Clark and Lincoln County line. Improvements for this project included new pavement layer and new pavement markings. The project wrapped up in October at a cost of approximately $160,000. And for Mayor Hardy in Boulder City, we have the pedestrian improvements along Boulder City Parkway and the Boulder City Trailhead on the River Mountains Loop Trail. The improvements on this project included the addition of seven new shade structures, which if you're ever riding out on the River Mountains Loop Trail, you appreciate, as well as trashcans, benches, new LED solar lighting, and reconstructed concrete pads. Project wrapped up in November at a cost of approximately $450,000. And then here's a whole list of other projects that were done during the quarter. As you can see, a lot of projects under construction, as well as those that are going into design for future construction. And with that, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swallow. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Great. Commissioner, that concludes the CEO report. The next item on the agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report. And today, Deputy Director Mario Gomez is here with us.
Welcome, Mr. Gomez.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here on behalf of Tracy Larkin Thompson, our director, to give an update on the Director's Report. So I'm happy to report that the New Year's celebration was exciting and fortunately very uneventful, which is the very best kind. ANDOT is one of many agencies working together to make this event both safe and very successful. At this time, I just want to thank all of our partners, because working with you is what makes for a very safe and enjoyable event every year for our community. Moving on to the next slide, I want to talk about is the 25 miles I-15 feasibility study from Sloan to State Line. Essentially, I-15 South from State Line to Sloan faces an increased interest for development and redevelopment due to a lack of available industrial land in the Las Vegas area. The Harry Reid International Airport is at or near capacity, and a new Avon Park Airport is planned south of Gene. And then also Brightline West is also slated to alter our traffic patterns out on I-15. So the purpose and need for this study is to proactively plan and evaluate the feasibility of changes in land, land use and transportation along I-15 from State Line to Sloan. Our objectives are to assess the expected changes in land use, identify transportation needs, and to develop a sustainable corridor solutions associated with cost estimates. We will hold a total of six stakeholder workshops and an April public meeting. And in those stakeholder, those stakeholder meetings started in September 2023 and are ongoing through May 2025. The next stakeholder meeting is scheduled for mid-January of this year. Stakeholders will provide input on corridor needs and offer potential solutions. Those stakeholders are our usual partners, which is Federal Highway Administration, the BLM, RTC of Southern Nevada, Clark County, Department of Aviation, the City of Henderson, and several others. Other ongoing work or progress includes finalizing the land use projections, documenting existing conditions, and planning a public meeting in April. Next slide I want to talk about is, actually, let me see. So I'm missing a slide or two. So the next slide here is the Tropicana and Super Bowl Traffic Control. I'm happy to report that also our New Harmon Half Interchange opens on January 26. The New Harmon Avenue Half Interchange gives drivers on the northbound I-15 another option of accessing the resort corridor, and for those on the strip to access southbound I-15. Both traffic movements will be important during the Super Bowl as people move between the resort corridor and the Allegiant Stadium. The Harmon Avenue Half Interchange will also be necessary during Phase 3 of this project, since drivers will not be able to exit from northbound I-15 to Tropicana during that time. For the Super Bowl event, Tropicana will be closed between New York, New York, and Dean Martin on January 27th at 1:00 a.m. to February 1st at 9:00 a.m. for the work associated with setting up the Super Bowl traffic control configuration. The Super Bowl Traffic Control Configuration will be in effect from February 1st to February 14. From February 1st to February 14th, all construction within the roadway on I-15 or Tropicana will be paused. The north and south halves of the Tropicana Bridge will be open, but those will be at different heights. Traffic will flow in a normal east and west pattern and not in the current, what we call our diverging diamond interchange, DDI. Drivers will not be able to make left turns or cross the bridges due to the different heights, the height difference between the two bridges' structures. Stakeholder coordination meetings, so we are going to be working with our stakeholders and the media to get the word out about these closures as well. And so the Central Corridor Study, the Nevada Department of Transportation is preparing an environmental study for proposed improvements on and around I-15 with a study area between Clark County 215 or I-215, the south, which is better known as the Southern Beltway and Oki Boulevard. There will be a virtual public meeting scheduled from January 17th through February 16th. And we are encouraging everyone to visit ififcentral.com anytime to participate and submit their comments. There will be an in-person meeting from Wednesday, January 31st, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. with a presentation at 5:30 p.m. The in-person meeting will be held at the Clark County Building, Department 4701, West Russell Road, Las Vegas, A9118. You can submit your comments also in person at the public meeting or online by visiting that website that I just gave. And I am very happy to report also on Brightline West. Yesterday, Acting U.S. Secretary of Labor Julie Su and Strategic Advisor for Infrastructure Workforce Development for the USDOT, Paige Chevlin, visited Las Vegas and met with a community-focused group and then with a union partnership-focused group. They were interested in hearing from our community members about what is needed to create more pathways to the jobs being created by Brightline West project. The second meeting with labor unions was focused more on their role in fostering those pathways and working in partnership with Brightline West and transportation agencies like ANDOT. So a little bit of an update on Brightline West. The grant funds for $3 billion was awarded to ANDOT on December 5, 2022. And then moving forward with Brightline West, Brightline West will be seeking the remaining funds of the $12 billion project from private activity bonds and private investors. They have successfully funded the Orlando extension using these type of financing vehicles. Per existing agreements, ANDOT's right-of-way encroachment permit for them, for Brightline West to start work is contingent upon Brightline West having proven that they can finance the entire $12 billion project. ANDOT, Brightline West, the Federal Railroad Administration, which is better known as FRA, are working together to draft a grant agreement between FRA and ANDOT. ANDOT will be going before the Interim Finance Committee on February 8th to establish a non-executive budget for the flow of funds between FRA to ANDOT to Brightline West. So we're trying to keep the rail funding separate from the highway funding. And then a little bit on the schedule on Brightline West as well. Long-term, the project is slated to be completed by the 2028 Los Angeles Olympics. And short-term, to complete the grant agreement and start construction by the third quarter of 2024. And as a request for any future RTC meetings, ANDOT would like to do a more in-depth presentation. And so that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move on.
Thank you, Chairman. Next item on the agenda is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 20, can be taken in one motion.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye. Mayor Hardy?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman. Agenda item number 21 deals with legal information from our legal counsel. We have nothing to discuss today, so we can move on to the last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizen's participation period.
Very good. This is the second time set aside for a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. As a reminder, we are prevented from entering into dialogue with members of the public during the public comment period. Please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
All right. Three minutes. Thank you. My name is Brian Haglund. I'm a driver, professional driver. Yeah. I'd like to thank TransDev, Kevin, and all my supporting staff. They followed through on their commitment to make sure I was relieved on time. And communication, it's there. I'm happy with that, you know. But I talked to other drivers, and some of them still have issues. So I don't want to be the special one, all the attention put on me. I want all the drivers. There's over 1,000 of us. I want us all to be communicated with and, you know, send out texts. I get calls every day at 2:00 o'clock, "Hey, you're relieved on time." I'm like, "Hey, cool. All right. You just send me a text. I'm good with that." But it's awesome, man. I feel special. I walk in, everyone in dispass. "Hey, Mr. Haglund, this, oh, that's all cool. All right. Whoa, what did I do here?" All right. But it's nice. I like it, man. Keeps the driver positive, and, you know, I'm ready to go do my job. And it's great. I love it, man. And the lady that came last month, she complained, or she made an issue about the stop on Walter Street. And it was addressed, and they didn't close it. I seen her this week. She was like, I'm like, "Hey, man, they saved our stops." She was like, "Oh, yeah," smiling and happy. And then, "Oh, I got COVID. The doctor told me." I'm like, "What the hell?" I wish my screen was put in to go all the way up, but, you know, someone decided, "Hey, we're going to give you half a screen for your safety." I don't know. It's kind of like, "Hey, we got you a door as a cup holder there. That's nice." Some of them don't have the cup holder. I mean, someone made the decision, "Ah, give them one. Don't give them one," you know. I mean, and, all right, I'm not going to use up six minutes today. I brought an extra three with me just in case. But, yeah, cones, roads. There's a lawyer, I heard his talk show this week, and he talked about the roads and cones and the issue and the F1 issue, and it's just totally messed up, you know. I mean, he's, he's making it public out there and trying to get more. Who knows what his agenda is. But, I mean, it's, it's out there, you know. The public wants these cones out of the way. You're going to start a project, make sure it's set up to complete, not throw it down, dig it up, throw it down, move it over, do this. If it's not ready, don't start it. And then, you know, drivers want money. We want an increase, and I'd like to see it. Otherwise, drivers are talking, schools giving them increases. We want increases. Lower the max out and give us more money. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. We're going to go to Ms. Jones. Do we have a microphone for Ms. Jones over there? Oh, sorry.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Jones. And I was very happy to hear that Ms. Barnes was able to get the bus where she lived, there on Water Street. That is really great. I'm glad you guys were part of the solution and not the problem. Please keep that up, because it's very important. Safety is always number one, no matter what vehicle you ride in. And there are rules to these vehicles, and the passengers need to follow them. Safety on the buses, I'm hoping that really improves a lot, because that does mean a lot of things to me. Unfortunately, I'm going to be moving to Colorado because I can't take the heat here, my doctor said, because of health reasons. So I love the Silver Ride Program very much so. I definitely approve of that. I like all the other programs that you guys offer. They're very great. And please be part of the solution, not the problem. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do we have Stan Johnson? Nope. Okay. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment this morning? Yep. Okay.
Good morning. I'm William Lynn, Las Vegas operator. I'm here to talk about, well, obviously, the safety of the coaches is always a top priority. With him mentioning the enclosures, obviously, we're still looking for different designs. We're looking for one that's more all the way to the window. More importantly at this point, the equipment itself. As we talked this morning, the equipment is, it's all, most of it's down. What's going out is, has multiple problems. One of the biggest problems, once it's out there with things like no heat, it's not being brought back. It's being continued because of the other problems with other buses that are down. We got a lot of people that are already sick, getting sick. And if we moving buses, especially going into the colder weeks coming up, with no heat, it just means more drivers sick, which means more people not getting moved around as they're not here. We have an operator in the hospital right now that was asked to continue with no heat. So it's been brought to the attention. I had a conversation this morning. I just want to make sure that. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of it. We've had, I've never seen this many buses down in the wintertime before at all, to the point where drivers out of one yard are like, well, the other yard's not even there. Well, they can't get out if they don't have the equipment to move out. And if the equipment is our biggest issue, then we got a big problem, because none of us are here for no reason if we have no equipment to move. And then obviously, people don't make it to work. That's my biggest thing. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barnes?
I'd like to say I have a cold. I'm losing my voice, but Happy New Year to everyone, and I hope it'll continue to be a new year. And we have to take note of what the Bible says. The Lord said he'll bless us and then he also curse us. So a lot of time, I look at the situation with the buses and things. It is a curse of all on when you don't do what's right and do what God say what's right. And I have a hard time staying awake sometimes because I take pain medication. 66 years old, my knees are in a lot of distress. I have to ride the bus every day, and I don't mean to fall asleep on the bus. I know the security people like to put people off, warn you not to sleep because it's a safety hazard. And it's also a safety hazard, all the lying that's going on on the bus. I did put it in the computer about the lies last year. The people are being ordered on the bus, they got a racket going with this drugs. All these people on Fendal, they're feaming off of me. I may have to leave this whole country. I go home, people are feaming for Fendal. They got highly respected people on this Fendal drug. All these people there, they're firing me for income to pay for drug dealers and drug mules. They even using the bus system to mule the drugs in there. It's just out of control. I hope this year don't continue like it started off for me, because they're using me. And I mean, I had to live homeless, trying to stay warm, stay inside the bus. You fall asleep, you go outside, then, so you can't sleep in here, you gotta go outside and wait on your bus, because you can't stay awake. Well, I'm an old lady, I can't help it, I take pain medicine. I'm trying to stay warm this winter. Hopefully, they can get some control over all the lies. I see that as a safety hazard to lie on the bus, and it's something they order those people on there. And I tell them, I say, you all are being put on this bus to lie. It doesn't make any sense. The overload of the bus, there's no seats for people that's trying to sit to go where they really need to go, because they're lying. They lie on the scrip bus. I wrote it all night, I know, last night. They're ordering those people to lie on people on these buses to keep my name from being removed, so the drug addicts and drug dealers can continue their dealing and get rich off me. I don't know if anybody else having this trouble. I want to make it public. They're using me to mule drugs. They don't have my permission. I don't do drugs. I don't sell drugs, never have and never will. Something has to be done about the muling of the drugs and selling up the drugs at my expense. Then drug dealers have threatened me in the past. They better not get busted. I told the police how they do. I didn't put them up to selling drugs. I worked in my life when I was young and healthy. I went into the military. I had worked other jobs. I didn't sell drugs. I didn't wait to check days and knock people in the head. I worked and made money. I don't know what these people think they're supposed to sell drugs, and it's legal. Then they mad at me, because I won't vote for them to do it, and I won't go along with them, so they make life hard. I have to live homeless. I have to beg at times to survive. Then they lie to Social Security Office. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Justin Jones and everybody. Mayor, you're leaving us. A dynasty is stepping down, and you've done great for Las Vegas, and we thank you very, very much, and we will miss you. Yeah. Okay, MJ, thank you for your CEO report. This is September situation. It's very good. Gave me a lot of information. I came upon an interesting situation this morning. I almost got in an altercation with this person, which brings more to mind about how the bus has to be more aesthetically pleasing. I mean, it has to break down, people have to come in and feel more comfortable. The signage, where the signs are about whatever, you need to have better signs, better signage, motivational signage. When people look up from their phones and say, oh, that's interesting, I'll think about that. You see, you have to have, you have to make the buses a mobile library. If you want the violence to stop and to protect the drivers from the violence, because it rose in 2023, you've got to make the inside more pleasing, because right now, it's a mindless, it's a mindless drive. If people are not looking at their clocks, they're not looking at anything. Look up at the signage, nothing. So you have to do better. Now, that safer campaign, it's cool, you know, I don't mind, but I have something to complement that. Motivational talks, signage, you know, tells you something about yourself, that those buses need to. A marksman came and stopped the altercation before it got really, really, you know, before we start really dancing. But the point is, that situation should not happen on the bus. It should be like you're walking into a library. I know I'm signing start a festival, but you can do that, you can make it more beautiful. So you want to get this public, you want to have the public support the transportation, but how about the people who are supporting the transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close our public comment, and we are adjourned. Thank you.